Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. I ask you to please stand and salute flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public notice that this meeting pursuant to the Public Public Meeting Act has been given by the clerk in the following manner: posted on the bulletin board in the Borough and Clerk's office, emailed to the retrospect and to the carrier post. At this point in time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our solicitor, Mr. Rowan, for the reorganization.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. What we're going to do is swear in new members, well, not actually new members, but members that are renewing their terms. We have John, Fred, Candy, Larry, Dick, not here, so we'll swear in me at that meeting, and Dan. So you folks will all stand up and repeat after me, where I say aye, will say your name.
Aye.
Okay, aye?
Aye, and Lee Erms.
Do you solemnly swear?
Solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will perform all duties.
All duties.
Of the office of a member.
Of the office of December.
Of the Planning and Zoning Board.
Of the Planning and Zoning Board.
For the Borough of Rondi.
For the Borough of Rondi.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Of the government.
Of the government. All right, Joyce, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, what we're going to do, as we do every year at reorg time.
Do you want to do roll call first?
If you want to, I'm going to do it.
It doesn't matter to me. On our agenda, I think June had it, June had, let's do roll call. Let's go by the agenda, okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, Joyce, want to roll call, please?
Chairperson, I will. Candy, Lee Erms.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Here.
Ms. Gushen, here. Mr. Pachowski.
Here.
Mr. Benala.
Here.
Mr. Offerley.
Here.
Mr. LaVerde.
Here.
Mayor Capos.
Here.
Mr. Renieri.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Dickinson is excused, and he would like to extend his thanks to the mayor for the appointment. You called me, say yes, can you do that?
And Mr. Pettit.
Here.
We're going to open up for nominations for chairperson, Planning and Zoning Board, Borough of Rondi, for year 2018. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Candy Cleland.
Second.
That has a second. Are there any other nominations? For your motion to close nominations for chairperson?
I'll make a motion to close.
I'll second.
Have a second, then. All in favor of Candy, say aye.
Aye.
Not, nay?
Thank you. Thank you very much, members, thank you.
Thirty now, we'll over to you.
Okay.
Continue.
All righty. We're going to have nominations for vice chairperson. I would like to nominate Mr. Joseph Offerley.
I'd like to second that.
Okay. Any other nominations for vice chairperson? Do we roll call, do we roll call, David?
Close nominations?
Close nominations.
Close nominations.
By Mr. Pachowski, seconded by Mr. Stone.
If there is only one nomination, you can do a fire.
Is there a poll in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Congratulations, Bill.
Thank you. I'd like to open nominations for vice chairperson. I'd like to nominate Deb Rehutson.
Second.
Motion made by myself, seconded by Mr. Offerley. Any other nominations for vice chairperson? Close nominations?
I make a motion to close nominations.
Mr. Kabatas and Mr. Renieri, all in favor of discussion?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Debbie. Congratulations, you guys. Always a job.
Congratulations.
All right. Resolution, eighteen oh five, shall be in office. Resolution providing for the appointment of a solicitor. We have received only Mr. Karlemir, Mr. Rowan's bid, and we have been very happy with his services, so I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Rowan as our solicitor.
I can second that.
All right, any other nominations for solicitor? Make a motion to close nominations for solicitor?
I'll make a motion, second.
All in favor of Mr. Rowan?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Once again, Board, thanks a lot. We're working another year in, and we have a lot on the agenda on the master plan.
We do.
We're looking forward. Thank you very much.
Eighteen oh five, resolution providing for the appointment of engineer for 2018. We would like to put a nomination forward for Mr. Pettit.
I make a motion for Mr. Pettit.
Second.
All right, motion, second. Any other nominations? Close nominations?
Close nominations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Mr. Pettit, thank you so much for your services.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're hoping that we have a little more activity for you this year. I've only seen you a few times this year, so hopefully with the redevelopment, we'll be seeing each other more.
That's good.
I really appreciate, both you and David, I just want to say this, the one thing that I appreciate most with you both is the availability. As you know, I work around a fifty or sixty hour week, and I don't have a lot of time always to get to your door in the day when it's convenient to you. I appreciate you guys picking up the phone seven o'clock at night and talking to me when I can talk to you about something of volunteer to do. Your availability is important to me because I take this position seriously, and I really do lean on your expertise to guide me and this board in how we approach things. So I know you're not on the clock at seven o'clock at night, but you always pick up the phone before you call me back, and I want to thank you for that. All right, moving forward, eighteen oh six, resolution providing to appoint a secretary for 2018. I would like to open a nomination for Mrs. Joyce Pinto.
Second.
Any other nominations for secretary? Move to close nominations?
Close nominations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Joyce, I thank you so much. Same with you, Joyce, you're always available to me, and it's very important to me, and I appreciate it very much.
We're going to put a budget in the Borough for Mr. Pinto. All meetings, all events.
We love you, love you.
Bad idea.
Only the variant.
There we go. Why do we wait? That's fine.
You can't get that, Mike, it's not going to happen. Eighteen oh seven, establishing regular meeting dates and official newspapers.
They included that in your packet?
Yes.
I think it's a PM.
It is.
The odd one is that.
November.
That November meeting, did it on Thursday because we have a shore.
Yeah, that's the municipal alliance convention and election day, so we moved that one to Thursday. Everything else is pretty much status quo, so I'll entertain a motion to resolution eighteen oh seven.
Where is that resolution? Is it in the back?
It should be in the back, yeah.
It's not, it's solicited. The last thing you have, I believe it was.
Oh, down there, okay. Sorry about that.
Is the.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I don't remember the discussion.
Yeah.
What was the, there was something else?
Yeah.
Was it election day?
Yeah.
I'm bringing them in, but I had extra.
Oh, all.
National day out, national lay down.
Day out.
Yeah, national lay down, the ones that provide for that.
I make a motion to approve eighteen oh seven, establishing the.
Second. Motion by Mr. Perry Kabatas, seconded by Mr. Offerley, roll call, please. It says roll call, so I'm just.
I put it on all of it, I never know what's supposed to roll call and what's not here.
Mr. Rowan, what do you say?
When there's only one, on something like that, there's not going to be an alternate meeting date, so that could be just a tie or.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Approval of minutes, motion is in order to approve the minutes of the December thirteenth meeting provided by the clerk. Are there any questions or concerns with those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Renieri. Seconded by Mrs. Gushen, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do we have any old business to go over?
Resolution seventeen dash eighteen, this is the last thing we did in December of last year. This is a variance to permit a mixed use of residential and.
Correction, David, I'm getting seventeen oh six.
I have seventeen.
It's resolution seventeen eighteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, application seventeen oh six, yeah.
Okay, resolution, okay, I'm just clarifying for the record.
We were permitted a residential use within a commercial zone at Lindsay Avenue, thirty nine Lindsay Avenue, but we did stipulate a condition that it only can be used residential purposes by the rezonia and its president.
Yes.
And it was limited to six hundred square feet of living space.
Right.
And we was also, the board wanted to make sure it's a condition that the residential use was not going to have any impact or increase on the purpose coverage or anything the lights.
Light, yes.
So this type of variance will not go with the lane. They sell or they move out.
If it gets divorced, then it's also.
New lease can't stay there.
Like that continues, that was interesting.
Well, I would make sure you know we were a law group here.
We're Catholic. This is a Catholic word. No, we're not, I'm just kidding. Okay, motion to adopt resolution seventeen dash eighteen, please.
I should get roll call.
Yes, exactly, yes. Motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt.
All right, Mr. Renieri, second.
We don't have a meeting.
No, you, yeah.
Motion by Mr. Pachowski, seconded by Mr. Benala, roll call, please. Joyce?
I'm using the new roll call.
Yeah.
Cheryl Cleland.
Yes.
Mr. Stone.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Pachowski.
Yeah.
Mr. Benala.
Yes.
Mr. Offerley.
Same.
And Mr. LaVerde.
Okay. Do we have anything on new business this evening? I think we've spoken about that we did meet Nick, myself, and Mr. Pettit were having a conversation with the owners of the Dunkin' Donuts, I think.
I didn't make it in.
No, no, I'm saying we had a conversation.
He was there and I said.
Yeah, I'm saying we had a conversation.
Mr. McKenna? Is he the, is there engineer McKenna?
No.
No, it's, um, Teal.
Teal Jeffers.
Teal, Teal Jeffers.
Who is Mr. McJeffers?
Who else called? And which one is that?
That might be for the billboard.
This was for the drive-in.
Is he their solicitor, and it's Mike McKenna?
Mike McKenna?
Yeah.
Maybe he is, maybe he's the solicitor.
And he could be their lawyer, yeah.
He called to say that he'd be dropping off the.
Oh, he might be representing.
Yeah.
And I said, and this was yesterday, the day before, and I said, not for this reason, I hope.
No. So I just wanted to bring the board up to speed that Mary Kabatas, myself, and Mr. Pettit had some email conversations, and we actually met with Teal Jeffers and the two applicants, you know, just to, they were gracious enough to come in and spend some time with us to ask our opinion of what we thought of their preliminary ideas, and they were gracious enough to take our, and John had some additions to it, and they were gracious enough to take our input, and they're going to be coming in probably next month for the drive-through for the Dunkin' Donuts application. I have been speaking to Mr. Bock, and we are going to probably be looking into the master plan very soon, you know, just reexamination of the master plan, and of course, as you all know, we're going to be looking into the redevelopment zone. So we have a lot on board, hopefully, for this coming year, and I don't know about the old version property, I was like a long day.
Okay, go back, are we thinking that next month we'll have Dunkin' Donuts and that master plan review?
I think we can, I think we can do that if Dunkin' Donuts is ready. They haven't approached us yet, but if they're ready, I don't really think that's going to be a very long application of use.
There's not a lot.
There's not a lot, no. Right, there's not. There's no difference in the footprint, the footprint stays the same.
Yeah.
You know, the only thing that we told them we were concerned about was that corner, and I'm concerned about the staging because they, I believe they own the property, you know, when, where I went past this thing, there's literally four cars on a white horse bike in a forty mile an hour zone, just sitting there waiting to get in, and that to me is a disaster to wait to happen because you have somebody coming up on the cars forty miles an hour, and I don't get realize traffic is stopped.
But that's our issue.
No, so we, we explained it to them, that we need to have, we want proper staging, we want proper flow, so we don't have that problem here sham out of there.
And that, that was one of my concerns. Sidewalks.
Sidewalks, we want to make sure the kids aren't walking to school in between cars and the lighting and the stuff that you spoke about in that corner.
A little curvy.
About that, that's the curvy. So I think it's going to be a really straightforward application, I think it's going to be a great asset to the town because, I mean, you know, I think this, I think this might be the gateway drive-through.
Just first one.
If there's such a term, you know, I mean, it might, this might be the gateway drive-through. I mean, we would love to.
Gateway's not a good word.
Gateway is a good word, why is that a bad word? Gateway means like the first one to.
Introduction.
What are my words?
You should sit in your chair. Why?
So I think it might be, I think it might be something where if another company might look at that and say, wow, they're doing well, you know, there's some other properties that, with redevelopment, that might be suitable for a drive-through, I think it just might be a really good thing for the town. So we're going to try to entertain that. If they're ready in January, I think it should be straightforward. I'm sorry, February, I apologize.
I just want to say, you just want to increase their business dramatically.
Yes.
You know, we do a lot of Dunkin' Donuts development, and whenever you have a store that doesn't have a drive-through, they try.
Keep going.
Either add the drive-through or build a new store, because that's where they get their money from.
Absolutely. So I think it's going to be.
Can I bring up a question?
Sure, of course.
I don't want to turn it too much of it. The sidewalk, where the kids cross in front of cars, is that just going to be sidewalk or is it going to be able to walk away?
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet. The applications.
Yes, absolutely.
We'll have suggestions.
Absolutely.
As potential, yeah.
We let them know.
But it was a bit preliminary, just to review it, and because it's our first one, and get a feel for what the conditionally is.
And I thought, yes, and I thought it was really nice of them to come in ahead of time and just, and take our temperature.
But you promised.
No, they just took our temperature and asked us what we thought of their preliminary, and we all, and we all know Mr. Jeffers, and he's a good professional, and he works well with Mr. Pettit, so I thought it was very gracious of them to take their time to come in and ask us what we thought, that any of the change were added or deleted, so I thought it was a nice, it wasn't a long meeting, it was a half hour, forty-five minute meeting, but I thought it was productive, and I look forward to that application coming in, and hopefully with Mr. Pettit's assistance, we'll be able to make it a really nice site plan and make it a really nice workable site for the town.
So hopefully we can do that first, and then allow Mr. Bock to come in, do his part? Is that what we're looking at, this master plan review?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I haven't talked about something, no.
No, I hadn't because, you know, I was kind of waiting to, waiting for everything to, obviously, get the holidays square, and that's why we're not doing anything with master plans, like, I know that many of you told me you really haven't had a lot of time to review the master plan review, and we want to approach that with, you know, as much diligence as we possibly can, so I think that's going to probably happen in February unless Mr. Bock and Candace can't make that happen. We haven't set a date in stone, but just for your expectation, that's what I'm trying to be where I'm going to go with this. If it works for them, hopefully it'll work for us, and we can get that squared on February, and if not finalized, at least we have a Q and A, we can move forward with that.
The Q and A, I did, I hope everyone on the board, to me, this is an opportunity for us to look at our values, where does this, and decide what can be changed. One of the things that I noticed, and once again, take the temperature of the board here, is in the R2 zone, which is a zone that has larger, larger pieces of land, obviously the R1, our minimum track size is sixty, by a hundred, in the R2 zone, we're a hundred by two hundred, I think, and one of the things that's been brought to my attention, and not that we've had a lot on this board, I don't believe, but we've had a few instances where people come to the board to build detached garage outbuildings, and, you know, one of my thoughts is that the land use allows us to look at things that are permitted as opposed to bringing everybody in front of you. So as long as we can, you know, one of the things I had to ask Mr. Bock to look at was, do we have in the R2 zone at least the thought process that there may be a detached garage? Right, the rest of the community is kind of hard, and I think all those people need to come in.
Right.
R1 zone, I think we have to look at each one on individual basis, but in the R2 zone, I think if we establish some standards, you know, they meet the setback, they meet the, you know, some rear inside guard setbacks. If the footprint isn't too great, you know, I mean, I don't know what everyone's opinion about what a garage, a detached garage or a shed should be, and then another comment was, should that garage mimic or look similar to the home, or should we allow the pole barn type of the town? Once again, I'm up in the area, but I'm thinking that it's, it would be a positive thing. I see that there's a need for it, and I think one of our problems is that we've got people, once again, I'm going to make the process in a way that people get the permits and not, are not afraid of us, they're not just doing stuff illegally, and then we're finding out later, and we're having to deal with this, and we're, you know, we're either saying it's a pre-existing non-conforming, or we're forcing people to move stuff, or to make it work. I know Mr. Knight, we've been dealing with this on quite a few occasions and stuff like that, so maybe the board hasn't seen that as much as Mr. Knight might, has seen, you know, people doing stuff and then we're having to deal with it afterwards. So that was one of the suggestions I had, and I was, I would hope that if anybody else sees anything in this, in these, in any of the ordinances, have you ever thought that, you know, we need to talk, well, we talked about that, maybe the town has.
Right.
So we hate one and a half cars, what is one and a half cars? You know, that, that's unrealistic. Don?
Has the Borough given any thought to the undersized existing lots, the fifty-foot lots, that we keep having come in front of the board for variance to build a home when all the other lots on the street are fifty feet, that put down requires sixty feet?
Well, I think the ordinance does allow for, but we sort of brought them in because it says in our current land use that if the majority of properties, it's only for the setback.
We've had, we've had a lot of variances come in for existing lots, which doesn't need the sixty foot.
But created many years ago.
Right. To me, that's just a waste of time and money on the applicant's part, when the lot exists, like, what are you going to do?
So not creating necessarily a lot, you're talking about existing lots.
It's an existing one there.
Yeah, so existing, I mean, this is what I'm saying, I don't want to create people into this board unless they're breaking or asking for relief.
So is it as simple as just having an ordinance and?
We have to state that.
Create an ordinance.
If a lot existed prior to the adoption of the ordinance to create it sixty feet, it's still a conforming lot.
We create all these.
They don't have to change it.
So they wait, man, yeah? That's what we got to do.
Well, this is what this plan, you know, we can do this, because remember, everything we do here gets represented to council, rights are nothing to be adopted here, but we set up the ordinance, or the resolution here, and then send it up to council.
And you still have the same side guard setbacks, so you still have the separation between the.
Right, yeah. The side guard doesn't change, the rear doesn't change.
You got one building, means that's sixty.
So they may have them in front of us, anyway.
If they want to adjust the side or.
But if they're not, and they're complying.
If it's already compliant, I agree with John that, you know, we're encumbering an undue expense for the applicant.
Yeah.
When in fact, it's pretty much, there's nothing they can do about it. They can't, they can't buy, I'm sure, property, there's nothing they can do about it, change it.
Do you know how many are still out there?
Probably forty, that fits.
There's still a lot of them.
Not a lot, no. I agree with John a hundred percent.
Yeah, I mean, I think it makes it easier for everyone, I mean, if someone in the real estate industry, they're trying to sell a property, then all of a sudden, well, we have to go in front of the board to get this done, buh 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 buh, they might be intimidated or have anxiety about it, when if there's no other property to be gained by purchase, we all know.
How do we determine that? Because it's funny you say that, because in my own personal situation, I, you know, I purchased a lot of store, because I was a pre-existing non-conforming, I purchased a lot of store, I was able to do that, and we did have an application came in the other day, and we gave, remember, we did a few feet, and I don't think.
Yeah, they create anything that was non-conforming, right?
How many times have we had applications in front of the board bringing up the tax number, and they say, you know, seventy percent.
They highlight, they highlight all the forty foot.
The board always approves.
Right, I agree, I totally agree, I'm not, we're not looking to, we're not looking to discourage people, we're not looking to have empty lots, for, I mean, obviously, a homeowner lot is, is better for us tax-wise, it's better for the applicant to spend whatever the amount of money is, hiring an attorney and coming in here and having its contingency on their, on their real estate application, so I think it's a definite good idea, and I thank you for that.
So I could actually reach out to Mr. Bock ahead of time, make him aware that that's some kind of.
Does anyone else have a question or comment on that? I'm just being Nick. Anyone else have any questions or comments on it?
I'm more concerned about, you know, when you have these hundred foot frontage that they want to subdivide into two fifties, you know.
Not say existing.
That's, yeah, so if it was a pre-existing lot, you know, we don't really, I don't have a.
Before we made a non-conforming, so that's, that somehow distinguishes that. It will be already the tax mark, is what you're saying.
Or the tax mark, is what you're going to. Now, Debbie, you're saying, like, what a hundred foot lot, you know, all the rest of this.
The only problem that you would have, which maybe, or you were in some way, that somebody has a hundred foot lot, and it's sixty foot required, they come in, they want two fifty foot, and they argue, well, the nature of the neighborhood is fifty feet.
Well, that would be a requirement of variance.
Yeah, well, it would require, yeah, it would require a variance, but you could have[1607.16] could have language in, in the ordinance that, "Listen, pre-existing are exempt," and that would not, pre-existing lots then wouldn't be used.
Only pre-existing forty and fifty foot.
Right, but they could not be used as an example to, to promote a subdivision of the...
We don't like creating small ones, correct.
Because that's what people do, they say, "Well, it's a four year with everybody here."
But if it's a hundred foot lot and they're coming in in an R1 lot where it's mostly forty or fifties, what's the big deal of them splitting?
Well, we still want to come in front of us.
If there's no existing building on there, say it's a vacant, which there aren't, I don't think there are any really, a hundred foot lots.
But if the, if, if the ordinance says sixty feet...
Not an R1, anyway.
Well, I mean, if that's what, it, 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 it says in R1.
If the consistent, the current one says R1 is sixty.
Sixty, yes.
Then if we use that argument, what's the difference then? Why have, why designate sixty feet?
Right, we can't do that, no, it's got to be pre-existing. In my opinion, it's pre-existing only.
So I think when people do come in, like Debbie said, they have a hundred, they want to create two fifty, yeah, you're looking at the character of what's already existing, but those people were pre-existing, you can't use that as an argument for your hardship to why you...
We don't want that right now.
The person that has a hundred foot lot that wants to subdivide it into two fifties still has to come in front of us.
That's right.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I'm talking about like an existing lot that just wants to build a...
Existing forty.
And I don't have to come in front of them.
I agree with that.
So the language has to be specific to an existing lot.
Yeah, if that was, if those lots were...
Not a creative lot.
Existing party adoption of the ordinance, yeah, there you go.
And this board will not only create a forty foot lot, so...
No, we're not going to create any forty foot lots. Now, what, Mr. Rowan, would be appropriate, um, would you or Mr. Pettit want to send something to Mr. Bach ahead of time?
I can carry it, I can, because it's really, if you recall, it was allowing all of us to really reach out to the candidates if we wanted to, so I, I want to, I did my homework, and I, I called, and so that's something I thought...
I know, Gene, you had some concern about ambiguity in, in some of the...
Yes.
Have you got a list that maybe you can give to candidate or a, a, you know, a box candidate?
Wow.
Yeah. We're due to do it, all these are over.
You see, that, not before the end of the, before next month.
Okay.
Because what they can come is, we draft, we draft ordinance for this next month.
Sure, sure.
So these are starting days, anything...
Any day now, not good, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Well, actually, we would like to have everything fourteen days, you know, what we need, so we can, so we'll, we'll kind of only give you like twenty and weeks.
Well, I said mine about March.
You just heard me on the master plan?
Yeah.
Us ordinances that would follow.
At this point, what I'm hoping to say to this board...
That not like any, like definition.
Well, in my opinion, this is, if you want to add that to this, I'm hoping what they're going to do is, we leave this process, this board has recommendations that are converted into ordinances, and our, our council simply can't adopt. I want to avoid what happened the last time we did a master plan review where we, we didn't do fifty percent, maybe we...
But revising the ordinance is separate from adopting the master plan, so we can...
By all means, by all means, pressure we can do it at the same time, correct?
But let's change the definition, or let's clarify what triggers site plan review.
Yes.
Because it's not clear.
And we're allowed to do that through this process, right?
What's required? You're making the recommendation to cancel.
Yeah, that's, that's what we can do.
This can take too much, it doesn't have to be done in February. I mean, if, if, if you want to go back and really come in front of us next month and, and, and talk about what your recommendations are and what your recommendations are, and everybody else can think about their recommendations, we don't have to do that next month. I mean, it's no rush, it's just, we want to get it right, so it's not a problem. I mean, I'm sure Candace or, or Mr. Bach would come in and just have a conversation, but we really don't have to get this, we're under no obligation to have this done on, at any particular date.
It can take as long as it has to.
Yes.
But I will say also, once again, some of the homework that I've done is, you know, looking at the R1, R2, R3 zone. One of the things that I've noticed reading, reading our land use ordinance is, you know, there should be, in my opinion, a flow, everything in R1 is allowed, you know what I mean, in R2, and doesn't, if you recall, it doesn't clearly flow that way, and then if you recall, one of our famous cases is the definitions of certain things, i.e. the corner property. It's a corner property in all three zones. It's not in just one zone, it's all zones, a corner is a corner, and things like that. You know, some of the things that we've talked about in the past, the sidewalk issues and things like that, and, you know, I, I just noticed it seems like, when you said the ambiguity in certain ordinances, if you have it in R1, but then it never carried over to R2, so I, there's got to be a way to clean that language up, so it's a little bit...
It's this...
Yeah, that's what I'm...
Yeah, in all the districts.
Well, let's just, let's, let's plan on, on not adopting anything next month, let's plan on having a, a little bit of a workshop meeting on this next month, everybody has time to look at this and talk about it, and email Steve or, or John or David, whoever it is, if you have any questions, I mean, I think you should email them and ask them, "Hey, is, is this something that would be appropriate?"
This is a public hearing, this next meeting, was that, this is not a public hearing.
We don't, we did not notice a public hearing.
But at some point, we do have to have a...
That's correct, yeah, but we did, but we did not notice it yet, so I think, I think our best case would be to go next month as kind of a, what we're doing now, a workshop, where everybody goes home tonight, this month, and looks at the master plan and highlights whatever questions or comments they might have. I will ask someone from Mr. Bach's office to be here, Mr. Bach's office to be here as well, and we can kind of workshop it a little bit and then refine it, and then hopefully by the March meeting, we'll be able to, um, put out notice for the hearing and then adopt it. And again, if it's not ready, it's not ready, we'll do it in, in April, it's not a big deal. We want to get this right because we, we had some hiccups that some did it.
Better to try to clear it up, the things that we had difficult.
And there was some other language, you know, some of the latitude, what we've talked about with the zoning officer, you know, to sit there and try to, to identify every single use or every single, you know, we had the livestock issue, you know, what's the definition livestock? Do we really need to list every animal that is potential on the livestock issue? Well, I think there's an intent clause in there, there's a little bit of an intent of the livestock.
I agree.
And I'm going to bring it up to this board because it's going to come to council, you know, we have an issue where someone has ducks, and ducks are not specifically outlawed, but the line says such as, it says such as chickens.
That's our one clue.
I'd say eels, but I would assume that such as would allow us to look at those kinds of things. So in that particular case, though...
An applicant has the right to come before this bull.
And this applicant has that right.
Or a pet.
They do, but in this particular case...
He says no, and they believe they're okay, and they...
Right, but in this particular, particular case, I don't believe this is one that would come to council as opposed, because it's, it's an ordinance as opposed to a land use issue. So in that particular case, I think the council has to make a decision on this unique, specific case where the person is not necessarily raising livestock, they are simply housing these animals that were destined to be consumed, and they save them, and so we're, you know, there's not raising, there's a roll man, so unless there's some, a nice thing, you know...
And when we, we want to, in some of our commercial, or our commercial zone...
So council has to do that, I forgot.
Maybe specify uses that we, we want to prohibit instead of, and then...
That's the better one.
That are conditional, okay, so we don't want this used at all.
In that particular zone.
Right, yeah, it's, it's a prohibited use.
Yeah.
Then you could, you could have a list of permitted uses, and then anything else would be conditional, so if you disagree, probably it can be with conditions, you know, we...
What do you think about that, Keith? You're the enforcer.
Well, anything that would clarify what is permitted in there without, you know, everything coming to the board.
Do you have a list of things that you, for consideration? Or can you have a list for consideration for next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
We're going to get together. It's both are kind of putting some things together.
And maybe, and how about some things that, that the borough or you folks definitely would, would want, that you would want prohibited?
Okay, right, yeah.
Yeah, that would be the, you know, the big thing.
Yeah, and I think there is, and we have the concern of the, like, livestock, what the mayor had said, you got a month to think about, get a punch list together, and it's a workshop.
Yes, it's take our time, it's not, it's not push and prod, it's take our time and do it a hundred and ten percent and, um...
But John, I, I hear you, it, it's not specific, you know, even my own personal experience, I had to go in front of a closer township because my use was not out, so I had to go there and argue that my use was similar to another one that was specifically outlined but wasn't prohibited, because I agree with you, it's prohibited, that's a much heavier...
Yeah, yeah, that's a real outlier, prohibited.
What's that?
If it's prohibited, clear.
That's a tough one, yeah, it's pretty clear that you need a variance.
But if you have a conditional use, you have to set forth the conditions.
Right, yeah.
That you have to meet to make it permitted. In other words, you can have a fast food restaurant if you have an acre of, like, mick and stuff like, and then if you don't, then you need a use variance because you don't meet one of the conditions.
Right, you have that for after the building. It's permitted, but it's conditional.
Since our drive-through is conditional. But are there conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's still, it must be approved.
Do we want to, because if, if I have a use that's a conditional use and I do all the conditions...
It'll be a variance.
Yeah, then they don't have to come in.
And I ask it as simple, then we need to clarify the language.
If we feel there are...
That's the law.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's why, yeah.
That's the law.
If you, you have to see where our ordinance is.
Oh, okay.
If it has a wall, then our ordinance has to...
When we did the conditional use for drive-through, did you have some concerns about that? Did you say we were missing certain things? Do you recall that conversation?
I probably used a couple.
You did, you raised a concern and said, "Well, if you don't make the condition, you can't impose it on it." But I mean, they're still subject to all the other ordinances that Keith talked about. If the ordinance says you have to put sidewalks in, it doesn't have to be part of the condition, it's part of our...
No, I was talking the initial threshold of whether I'm permitted or not.
Yeah.
And if I have a conditional use situation and I have six conditions that I have to meet, if I meet them all, I'm permitted.
You don't come in.
If I don't meet one of them, I need a use variance.
But you also talked about the triggers for site plan approval, is that something you wanted to define better?
Yeah, because it's very unclear.
Okay, so it's not clear who has to come in front of us.
You're going to take care of that, John?
It's not clear what triggers the requirement for site plan approval from this board.
You'll be taking care of that, board?
What a site plan has to be submitted.
Are there any other things we've had issues with Joyce, that you've been involved where it was, is the lack of clarity?